Of Swiss Vale Regular Council Meeting for December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh three P M. Uh, let's go through roll call. Miss Alfonso Wells.
Present.
Mister Mizer.
Here.
Mister Price.
Here.
Miss Salisbury.
Yeah.
Uh, Miss Scales, I don't believe is going to be joining us tonight. I think she's unavailable. Miss Tribbling?
Present.
Mayor Schwartz Welter.
Here.
Let's move to number three, which is public comment, and we don't have any this week, so we're gonna just keep moving through to meet the police. Uh, as we have done the last few months, we have a couple of police officers from Swiss Vale joining us to, uh, tell us a little bit about themselves. So we'll start with, um, uh, we'll start with Officer Gus Bondi, since you, your video is already turned on. If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and, uh, what you, you know, why you wanted to or enjoy working for the Swiss Vale Police Department.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, very good. Just wanna make sure I'm not very tech savvy. Um, well, I've been a police officer with the Borough of Swiss Vale in total about two years now. I started part-time for about a year and a half, left for a full-time position at another department. And then I, uh, was offered a full-time job with the Borough of Swiss Vale back in April, I wanna say of this year, so I decided to come back because I thoroughly enjoy the community and the people that I've worked with in the department as a whole. A little bit about me, I'm from Murrayville, Pennsylvania, born and raised, uh, went to Franka Regional Senior High School, graduated there in two thousand and fifteen. I then attended C C A C Boyce Campus for two years where I just studied, uh, general electives and then, uh, transferred to John Carroll University where I got a four-year degree in, um, sociology and criminology. Uh, in my free time, I enjoy spending time outside, fly fishing, boat archery hunting, whatever it may be. Uh, like to exercise, like to stay physically fit. Um, I have a brother and a sister. I'm a triplet. Uh, I'm on, so you know, we, uh, we get, we spend a lot of time with them too, and my family. So, uh, but all in all, I, I thoroughly enjoy the community. I enjoy the department. I like working for Chief Watson. Good guy, good leader. Uh, overall, no complaints. Been a very, Swiss Vale's been very good to me, and I hope that I can in return be good back to the community and the department as a whole.
Yeah, thanks so much for your service, Gus, and your family owns a printing business. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
My, my last employer always had their business cards printed by Bondi Printing, so.
That's right.
Any other council members have any questions for Officer Bondi? None?
No, just thank you. Thank you for your, your time tonight, and thank you for your service to the borough.
And not a problem at all. It's, uh, it was a pleasure seeing everybody, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, share my, share, uh, a little bit about me with everybody. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks so much. And it's just, it's, this is a great opportunity for some in the public who attend the meetings to put a, a face with a name and just, you know, know, know who it is that are out there, um, protecting and serving our community. So thank you.
Absolutely. Not a problem, Chris. Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well. All right, I see Officer Ryan Waros has turned on his camera, so let's turn it over to you. Tell us a little about yourself and.
That's kind of a hard follow-up, Eric, Officer Bondi. No, I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity. Um, yeah, my name's Officer Ryan Waros. I've been with the department for, uh, about three years and change now. Started here part-time in two thousand and twenty, and I've enjoyed it ever since. I've been full-time now for about a year and a half. Um, you can't really get better camaraderie and family-type aspect. Outside the department we work for, it was actually a huge reason that I've turned a lot of opportunities down. Um, I'm from Monroeville, Pennsylvania, obviously, right next door. Um, born and raised there, come from a family of police, so it's kind of always been the mission to do this job, and I've loved it every second that I've done it. Uh, graduated from Plum Borough, went there my last two years of high school, but then moved back to Monroeville. Um, and like I said, I actually ended up turning that job down recently, which is like probably one of the biggest departments you can work for, uh, to stay in Swiss Vale, because I just love it here so much. I've met a lot of you guys on council, and I have no complaints. You guys are fantastic and easy to work with. Our chief, it doesn't get much better than that, if at all. And like I said, the, the department's just a family, so I love being here. And I'm finished out year one, hoping to do twenty-four more years here. But other than that, I mean, as far as the community itself goes, it's just a blast. It's, there's a lot of youth we get to interact with. I think, at my job interview, that was a big thing I said. Um, so yeah, I heard we're putting a new basketball court in. I think that was a plan at our new station, so I know that's been a really big, uh, excitement for us. I think it's gonna open up a lot of doors. But as far as the community goes in general, we just had a blast, and it's, I know, I enjoy thoroughly every day coming into work, so. Guys have any questions for me? Happy to answer them. Nope.
Well, I, I thank you so much for your time and your service, and I, I remember hearing, you know, that, that you had turned down, uh, an offer from Monroeville, and I was, I was both shocked and elated simultaneously, so.
It made the waves, so.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't regret a thing.
Well, we are glad to have you for the long haul.
And I appreciate it, Chris. Thank you.
Um, Officer, I don't play basketball, but I would like to see y'all play one day. That would be exciting to ha- uh, to watch, uh, to watch our officers play on a, on our own court, right?
Absolutely. I can hold, I can hold my own, but I'll probably get dusted by a few kids, so, but that's okay.
And, and Sean, we all can play basketball. I can play basketball, not, not well.
Yeah.
I can play.
A for effort, so.
Am, am I smelling a council versus, uh, police department basketball game? I think that would be interesting.
So, yeah. No, I appreciate the opportunity there, guys. I think it's a really, uh, it's a good initiative to bring us on here and get to meet everybody, sort of put a face to us, so. That's nice. We appreciate it.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, Officer Waros.
No problem. I'll talk to you guys. Thank you.
Take care. All right, well, let's move to, um, item five on our agenda. This is our council action, so these are all of the motions that we are going to be going through. Uh, we're gonna start with item A, which is minutes, so I'd love to entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, council agenda meeting and the November second, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Let's move to item B, finance.
I move to approve the Borough of Swiss Vale paid bills in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
No, we should pay our bills.
We should pay our bills. The responsible thing to do. All right, well, let's vote on it. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Let's move to item C, personnel.
I move to appoint Shutara Wilson to the position of administrative assistant at an hourly rate of nineteen dollars and fifty-three cents for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, with all other benefits as per the employee handbook.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
I, I will just say that, um, Shay has been a wonderful, um, uh, temporary employee up till now. Um, so getting her on a permanent basis will be fantastic. She has really fit into our depart- um, our department, and she's so helpful, and, um, you know, it's really a joy when she answers the phone. She's, uh, she's kind, she's competent. Um, so I'm, I'm really glad to see that she is joining us on a permanent basis.
And I agree with everything Sean just said. She's a delight, so I'm glad to be able to see her smiling face when I come to the building.
She is definitely a very positive and friendly, uh, influence in the borough, so I, I, I think we all have encountered her, uh, worked with her and, and, and feel very similarly about that. All right, let's, uh, call the question. Um, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Welcome to the, the, I guess you're already part of the staff, Shay, but, uh, welcome to the, uh, the full-time position. Glad to have you. All right, let's move to item two under personnel.
I move to approve a memorandum of understanding between the International Association of Firefighters and Swiss Vale Borough concerning the creation of three full-time engineer positions in the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this motion? Okay, I know we talked about this, a lot of these, we, we talked about last week. Uh, all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, any abstentions? All right, the motion, um, motion carries. All right, let's move to number three.
I move to appoint Robert Fry as a full-time engineer in the fire department with wages and benefits as per the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Uh, do we, do we need to do all three of these separately?
You should.
Okay, all right, then we'll continue this way. Any discussion on this motion? This is one of three full-time, um, firefighters that we're discussing. Okay, hearing none, uh, we're voting, uh, on the appointment of Robert Fry. Uh, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, motion carries. Let's move on to the next firefighter.
I'm, I move to appoint Joseph Mahoney as a full-time engineer in the fire department with wages and benefits as per the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, any comments about this one? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor of appoint, the appointment of Joseph Mahoney, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion carries. Let's move to the third full-time firefighter.
I move to appoint Matthew Butler as a full-time engineer in the fire department with wages and benefits as per the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, motion is on the floor. Uh, any discussion or comments? All right, let's vote. All in favor of the appointment of Matthew Butler, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries, and I hope those, I know this is something that will, uh, greatly assist the fire department, um, in their, uh, staffing uh, at this time, so I'm, I'm glad that we can bring them on and, and make that work. All right, let's move to the, uh, sixth and final motion under our personnel category.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two dash sixteen to appoint to establish local agency procedures and appoint attorney W. Timothy Berry at a rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour as a neutral hearing examiner with respect to the adjudication of a disability pension claim made by an officer in the Swiss Vale Police Department and extending time limits as permitted by the Borough Police Pension Plan.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? Now, we commented very briefly about this last week. All right, let's, let's vote. Uh, all in favor of the approval of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any, um, uh, what, what do we, what's the last one? Abstentions. Sorry, thank you. None. All right, motion passes. Let's move to, uh, category D, budget finance.
I move.
To approve resolution twenty-two seventeen, adopting the two thousand and twenty-three budget as advertised.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's vote. All in favor of approving the two thousand and twenty-three budget, budget as advertised, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes, and I, uh, well, Deanne, I heard your lovely voice. Glad to have you able to join us.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the second motion under budget and finance.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen, setting the tax mileage of nine point oh mils for two thousand and twenty-three, uh, which was the same as, as it was last year.
Second.
Great, on the table. Uh, any discussion around this mileage or motion?
Oh, so this is the same one y'all voted on last time to raise it by that one mil, so it didn't raise one more mil. It's the same though.
No tax increase this year.
Evil mil that we had last time. Just checking.
That's correct.
Slip an extra mil in there on me, cuz I was like, wait a minute, I was getting confused. But if it's the same mil as before, and that didn't change, okay.
That is correct. It was eight mils in two thousand and twenty-one, and then we increased it to nine mils in two thousand and twenty-two, and we are maintaining that for the continued, basically for the borough building, um, process. Um, if we were to increase it again, I believe we, it would require an ordinance, which would mean it would need to be advertised and have a, a little bit of a different process, but since we're keeping it the same, uh, we can, we can approve the same rate by resolution.
That's correct.
Okay, any other comments on it? All right, let's vote. All in favor of the approval of resolution twenty-two eighteen for the tax mileage, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I.
Sorry, what was that? Were, were those all ayes?
I said a reluctant.
A reluctant aye, okay.
Everybody else say aye. That's reluctant. I didn't vote on it the first time around. I am reluctantly going along with it since it's already in place, to be clear. I hate seeing that little increase when I go to pay my taxes, and I'm sure there are other people that do too, so I'm just making our crotchety-ness known.
Well, thank you. Uh, uh, yes, so, uh, I heard, uh, a lot of people say aye and one reluctant aye. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Let's move to the third motion under finance.
I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two nineteen, approving the two thousand and twenty-three tan loan in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars with First Commonwealth Bank at an interest rate of five point two three percent. Second.
Any discussion on this motion?
Let's do this before they raise the rates.
Exactly. It's true, and this helps us pay our bills at the beginning of the year until the, uh, real estate taxes come in, and then we pay it all back.
I was just gonna say that, so, yep.
Great. Um, all right, so let's vote on this. All in favor of approving the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Let's move to the last motion under finance.
I move to accept the financing proposal for the new municipal building from First Commonwealth Bank for a loan of up to, uh, six million, five hundred thousand dollars for a fifteen-year term, amortized over thirty years at an interest rate of five point one percent and all other terms and conditions as noted in a proposal dated October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All right, any discussion around this one? Do you all understand the terms of this? I know the fifteen-year, thirty-year amortized can be a little confusing, but do you feel like you got a handle on it?
Y- yeah, I just, my question is, in, in the first one, uh, the first motion is set an interest rate at five point two three percent, and this one says five point one. Is that on purpose? Is there a difference?
Well, they're, they're two different loans. The tan loan is the tan loan for next year to pay the bills until the real estate tax comes in. It's a little bit higher because it's a lower amount. Typically, the, the, the higher the amounts go, the interest rates are a little lower. Um, so the, the borough building is five point one, which on the size of borrowing we're doing, we definitely want that one to be the lower one.
Gotcha.
And, uh, as, as I think we, I think we noted this last week, um, they, this proposal was dated October twentieth, and they've given us basically until tomorrow to approve it and lock it in, and within a couple of weeks, the, the feds hike the rate like three-quarters of a percentage, so, I mean, uh, i- it's, I know it's higher than what we've come to expect of the last few years, but this is about the lowest we're going to get. If we were to throw this out and renegotiate, we're already looking at almost six percent, uh, most likely.
Yeah, maybe even closer to seven at this point.
Maybe even closer to seven. All right, so are you ready to vote on this? Okay, all in favor of approving the motion as read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Um, so that concludes our, uh, budget and finance portion. We're gonna move to, uh, uh, subheading E, ordinances and resolutions.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-two dash six, requiring the Borough of Swiss Vale Real Estate Tax Collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes when a taxpayer fails to receive a tax notice and requests a waiver of additional charges, and when a property or mobile home transfer has taken place within the previous twelve months, subject to the requirements of Act fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
That one's a mouthful. Uh, it's on the table. Any discussion around this motion? This is just something we have to do that, uh, I don't, I don't remember the, the governing body that made this decision, but, um, it's a new policy that we have to enact before the fir- before the new year, I believe.
Governor and legislature.
Governor and legislature. Great, thank you. All right, um, all in favor of approving ordinance twenty-two dash six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, that motion passes. Let's move to the second motion.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-two dash seven, amending chapter ten, health and safety, part one, nuisances of the Swiss Vale Borough Code prohibiting planting bamboo within the borough with exceptions and regulating the maintenance of existing bamboo. Second.
All right, any discussion on this motion?
Um, just assuming that this does pass, you know, I know we've had some of the things that led to this. We have had complaints from residents regarding bamboo on their properties. If, uh, you know, barring anything unforeseen in this ordinance does go into effect, what, what would be the process for somebody to, to make a report of bamboo that violates this ordinance? Would that be just calling the borough building, or what would be the process for that?
They can call the borough building or the fire department and, and initiate a complaint through code enforcement, just like any other code enforcement issue.
Thank you.
What are the exceptions? This is with exceptions.
I think there were some exceptions within the, the language of the order. Well. Yeah, fallopia is not included, but also if the bamboo is within a planter where I think if, if it can't grow out and expand, that, that's an exception, and, uh, there were some other things noted in the, in the ordinance itself.
Yeah, and the ordinance was advertised and distributed to everyone. There were some exceptions, like Mister Mizer said about the, um, you know, how it can be planted, um, if it's planted so far away from property lines, planted in a container, things like that are the exceptions.
Great, any other questions or discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor of approving ordinance twenty-two dash seven as read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Uh, motion three now, so, uh, Mister Batch, you understand there's an error on this one. Should we, uh, should we have it as read and then make a, an adjustment to it, or what would you like us to, how do you want us to handle this one?
If I, if I could just ask this person, whoever, whoever offers the motion, uh, this was a mistake on my part. Uh, Mr. Ziskow and I have been talking about another number of grant programs and, and such for this, um, sanitary sewer separation on, um, in the M forty-eight drainage area. This one, though, is actually for additional funding for the Shalai Avenue storm sewer, um, or sanitary sewer replacement. We applied to the cog for above four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds, but we, we probably will get maybe a hundred seventy-five or two hundred. So this is to apply for additional funds to fund that project, so it should say for funding to repair sewer line, sanitary sewer line on Shalai Avenue, rather than M forty-eight.
Is it still the COVID nineteen? Is it still the COVID nineteen small water and sewer system application? Okay.
Okay, I move to approve resolution twenty-two twenty to submit an application for grant funding to the COVID nineteen small water and sewer system program for am I supposed to say the slide part yet?
Funding to repair sewer line, the sanitary sewer line on Shalai Avenue.
Uh-huh, in the M forty-eight sewer.
So just the funding.
Funding to approve.
Return to repair the sewer line on Shalai, sanitary sewer line on Shalai Avenue.
On Shalai Avenue.
I apologize for the confusion on that.
Second.
All right, great, so that is on the table. So just again, to clarify, uh, this is applying for grant funding to the COVID nineteen small water sewer system, uh, for the repair of the sanitary sewer on Shalai Avenue. I need to, go ahead.
There would be no, uh, so this would hopefully, if we get this and the, the C D B G grant from the cog, then there'd be no out-of-pocket expense for the borough.
Right. I don't live on Shalai, but I'm sure that the residents who do live on Shalai are appreciating the fact that they might get grant money. I mean, they're not getting the grant money, that their sewage, uh, system is being repaired. Apparently, whatever repair is going on up here stops just short of my house. Uh, it is literally two houses down from, from where I am, so I hope that one day we can get, uh, sewer repair money for this part of, of Shoyar, going down to, um, uh, to Braddock, so that our sewer, uh, system can be, uh, put up to date.
We sure are happy, Sean.
I just wanna add my support. I too love sewers, and I love when they are functioning. So I thoroughly support this initiative to have functioning sewers on Shalai.
Yeah, we video inspected a number of lines in the last couple of years, and the Shalai lines, one of the, by far, one of the worst. Um, so we wanted to try to get this repaired, you know, get to make this one a priority to get repaired.
You ready to vote? All right, all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say not a stinky eye, but a.
Yes, a good eye, a resounding eye. Uh, any, any, uh, nays? Any opposed, I mean? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Let's move to, uh, category F, fleet.
I move to adopt the vehicle replacement schedules as proposed. Second.
All right, any discussion on this? I know we talked about it, uh, last month as well as last week.
I just have a question. Will we still have the opportunity to re- review the replacement uh, purchases prior to them happening? This is not like a blanket authorization of you buy whatever's on the schedule, right?
Yeah, I, that's correct. I mean, I think the goal of this was to provide long-term planning so that there was a, um, th- we have an expectation of what is needed for the borough to function and its fleet capacity, uh, but yes, every, um, every future purchase, just like we're going to do after this motion, will need to continue to go through council. We're not pre-app proving ten years' worth of, of purchases.
That's absolutely correct. Yeah, we're not asking you to say, hey, in two thousand and twenty-nine, we're buying, you know, we're buying it Ford Explorer, um, and we're just gonna go lease it. Um, you know, because leasing proposals have to come before council, uh, each time we enter into them, and so the approval for purchasing the vehicle and entering into lease would be, would happen at the same time.
And, and who knows what'll happen with, uh, costs? I mean, costs could change, could fluctuate. I mean, th- this will need to have some degree of, uh, dynamic wiggle room in the proposal, but it's the goal was to get something, you know, kind of like a skeleton that you can build around, and then, uh, based around that, you can kind of figure out, uh, when you can get what vehicles, and, you know, as, as we talked about last week, trying to make sure that we are uh, being, uh, fiscally and environmentally responsible in the purchase of those vehicles as well. All right, not hearing any other comments. Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Let's move on to the second motion, which is the purchasing of some of this equipment. Um, Mister Batch, Um, Mr. Batchi, am I understanding this, that we can do kind of all of those four sub items as under one motion?
Yes, um, it's more personnel related. The personnel ones you need to do separate, but this, if it's, if it's the collective thoughts of council to do it, you can, um, but I just wanted to say two things about this if I can before we.
Sure. Well, let's, can we, can we put it on the table and then have discussion? Miss, Miss Salisbury is your question beforehand, or can we put it on the table and then have comments about it?
Your table and then a question.
Okay, great. So, uh, let's, someone make the motion second it and then we'll, we'll defer to Mr. Mr. Batchi and Miss Salisbury for their comments and questions.
I move to approve the initiation of purchasing capital equipment for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, including the following vehicles, A, twenty-twenty-three trash collection vehicle, B, twenty-twenty-three police interceptor, two of them, it says times two, uh, uh, C, twenty-twenty-three dump truck, D, twenty-twenty-three pickup truck. Second.
Great. So, uh, uh, Miss Salisbury, would you be okay if Mr. Batchi makes a couple of comments and then you'll, you'll have the floor for your question?
Uh, thank you. Just want to point out on this one, there's no makes and models on here because we're still investigating, you know, what, what types of vehicles are the best vehicles to, you know, that would meet our needs? And if we could find something, you know, more eco-friendly, environmentally friendly, like in pickup truck, dump truck, trash collection vehicle, um, that's fiscally responsible, you know, we, we will move toward that. Um, there's also no leasing proposals associated with this because we don't have the cost. Typically, we have the vehicle set in place, what we want to buy, we have it identified where we can get it from and a cost. So we will have to come back to you when, you know, at the time of the leasing proposals, when we can actually get these vehicles. These vehicles are probably all sixty-nine months out. So that's why, you know, there's a little bit, it's, it's not a, you know, there's, there's not a, a rush to get them on our part. It's just the fact that if we order them now, we may have them by next, the end of next summer. And we don't want to get caught up in pushing them back a year and getting caught in the conundrum where now the police vehicles are being short on vehicles.
Yeah, so just to clarify that we, I mean, it sounds like we will have another opportunity to vote on this once those leasing proposals come in. Uh, the goal in voting for it now is that hopefully we would vote for, if we're voting for them now, we would vote for them in the future. But there is always the chance if something comes in astronomically high that we could always say, hey, we, we declined this.
Yeah, and all these are included in the budget that you just passed, um, earlier in the meeting. Everything is included in there. So there is a funding mechanism to pay for all these.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Batchi. Miss Salisbury.
So this is just from my own understanding. Um, we previously had voted to purchase some new police vehicles. And then it was my understanding we could not obtain the full complement of police vehicles that we had authorized the purchase of. So is this two on top of that or is this, does this set of two include that? I just wanted to make sure I understand.
In last year's budget, there were two vehicles, um, there were two vehicles budgeted for, uh, we purchased one this year. And that was, and that was only because another one got totaled. So it just replaced the totaled vehicle. And this is two new veh- these are actually the two vehicles that were budgeted for twenty-twenty-two. We just pushed them back to twenty-twenty-three. So we're not buying, we're not proposing to, to get two additional vehicles over the two that we were going to get. These are the two that we didn't get this year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that we weren't getting like more on top of what we had.
It's a great clarifying question. Go ahead, Mr. Price.
And I understand that when our police vehicle was totaled, that was the other driver's fault and so their insurance company paid to total the vehicle.
Sadly, no, because the person driving on, on, uh, suspended license and his insurance had also lapsed. So our insurance.
But the vehicle's being paid for by insurance mostly.
Vehicle was replaced by insurance with insurance funds and a combination of insurance funds. And we had some money in the, uh, uh, in the, in the bank account from, um, district attorney's office seizures, so that we, you know, that has to be used for police purposes. So we took that money and put it toward the vehicle. So the entire vehicle was paid cash between insurance and the DA's money. And then we have to pay the outfit out of, out of our general fund. But, uh, that will be covered by, more than covered by the lease payments that we had budgeted for this year, but we didn't take on.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Are you all ready to vote on this? All right, all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Let's move to category G, meeting schedule. One last motion to make.
I move to adopt and advertise the twenty-twenty-three meeting schedule as presented to council.
Second.
All right, any discussion around this one?
Once again, glad it is inclusive of, um, different, uh, is definitely inclusive of, uh, different, uh, holidays that need to be observed so that everybody can be included. Not sure I should say holidays, different observances.
All right, let's vote on it. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Let's now, we're done with our business. Let's move to, uh, H reports. And we'll start with the cog report. Um, I don't know if, uh, my paper says Ms. Scales, I don't know if it'll be you or if it'll be Ms. Dribbling, but is there a cog report tonight? Ms. Dribbling, you are muted right now.
Okay, I'll take it. Um, due to the holiday parties for, um, the cog is next week. So we don't have anything to report right now. So, but thank you.
All right, wonderful. Uh, let's move on to item two, connect report, Ms. Alfonso Wells.
So Connect is keeping on, keeping on. They have trillion meetings at the end of the year. Lots of them, uh, but everything seems to be going along, uh, according to plan. Um, our lead, uh, program is going to be instituted. Uh, the digitization program looks like it, we will be getting an intern probably, if, when I, I asked this question, um, to, to, uh, some of the leadership of Connect, probably in June, I think. I think that's what they said. So they're still trying to get money and stuff like that, but we are approved, right? So we're right there. So we just have to, I guess, be patient with that. Um, they are continuing on with their, um, fire safety and, and really, um, trying to make connections in the region so that we can improve our, uh, our fire forces. Um, since there is, uh, unfortunately, um, the numbers have gone down and we want to increase participation. Um, and yeah, so all of these things and more are going on with Connect. And once again, I encourage everyone to come if you can. Um, it is always interesting and strategic and it is, uh, fascinating to meet the people who are getting things done or at least the people who want to get things done. So, um, that is the end of my connect report.
Thanks so much and thank you so much for the time that you put in to connect as an organization, uh, and, and the ways in which it benefits the borough. So thank you for that time commitment that you make, Ms. Alfonso Wells. All right, let's move on to, um, a new committee report, uh, this month, which is item three, building committee report, Mr. Price.
Uh, well, as many of have learned, um, we're going to be moving borough operations from the borough building, uh, to the school up on Evans Street. And I understand that, uh, the school board has approved to that. And I raised the issue last week that I'm hoping that we can find a spare classroom so that we can go back, uh, to, uh, live council meetings as, as, as soon as that move is completed. We've been, um, the building committee's been meeting, uh, with the, um, engineers and the architects, um, uh, frequently about the building. And, uh, we have been told, which we knew, that interest rates have been going up and that's, that's why all the efforts to try to lock in are right with the bag. Material costs have been going up the last two years, ever since COVID started. And, um, so, uh, we're concerned that we, we can't build bid out to a contractor yet until all the final specifications are, are done. But the general sense is that, uh, inflation is going to take hold and that, uh, things are always going to cost more. Uh, so for that reason, uh, we asked, uh, core engineers to go back to the drawing board and try to help find as many places as we can to cut costs on the current proposal. Uh, these things involve, um, everything as small as, um, not having an epoxy floor in the police Sally Port, uh, to moving away from ceramic tile to vinyl flooring in the bathrooms. Uh, to, to reducing the size of the building by another, um, I think around eleven hundred feet or so. Uh, uh, and then effort to try to hold down the cost for when this project is, is being bid. Uh, we're also, uh, uh, looking at making changes in the outdoor patio, uh, to go to just a, a plain concrete instead of, uh, anything decorative to hold down costs. And, and we may ask, um, some of these, um, parts of the building to be, uh, bid separately, uh, in, in case we have to hold off for a while on installing the patio or, uh, or the, um, you know, uh, some, some, some of the other attributes. The building committee feels strongly that we would like to have long-term, um, uh, some, uh, sustainable, uh, solar panels. And, uh, we're hoping that some separate grant can be obtained, uh, separate from, um, the construction project, uh, uh, for that. But, uh, that's, that's, that's basically it. Sean, do you have anything to add or, or weldy in, anything that I've missed there?
No, I think you, you hit it and I will, um, emphasize that we are committed to making sure that, or at least I'm committed, right? But it seems like the committee is as committed, um, to making sure that we get, uh, some definitive sustainability, um, projects into the building, right? And one of those would be the roof. We have been in, um, in conversations, uh, looking for grants, looking for money, um, so that we can get this roof. Uh, um, that is something that we really want to do. And in terms of the outside, we're not particular, well, I, I, I'm not going to say anything about anybody else. I am not particularly worried about that because I think some of that can be funded, um, in slightly different ways. There are some other grants out there that we've been made aware of and, um, there are some other ways that we can make it, um, so that it really suits our purposes. Um, so I, I, I wouldn't look at anything that's going on the outside and saying that, oh, we've trashed those plans or anything like that. Just think of it as it's phase two or three of the project. Um, and sometimes those, uh, those parts may take a little extra time to get, but they have not been forgotten. They're still in there. Um, it just may have to take on a different dimension in terms of trying to get exactly what we want, um, to really benefit our neighborhood and make it pop.
Wonderful. Thank you to the committee so much for, um, all the hard work you all are putting into that. Uh, Ms. Salisbury.
Uh, just wanted to confirm, the school board did approve the contract. I was up there on Monday and, uh, they did vote to approve the contract. So from what I understand, um, admin and police are available to move up there. From what I understand, they might have to clean out some areas or something, but they can start using that space immediately. Um, I did have a question that I'm conveying that community members had asked me, which is, um, people are curious if any parts of the building are going to, the existing building are going to be reused or salvaged or anything, whether by like construction junction or somebody had told me that some of the bricks might be reused in a decorative way. So I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I'd heard the, uh, proposal that some of the bricks be reused. Um, I know some boroughs actually sometimes sell bricks. I didn't know that there would be many people that would buy them, but that, that's a possibility.
We have given the architect a directive to try to use some of the existing brick in the new building to try to pay homage to the old building, whether it's some interior walls or maybe wrapping part of the building with that, with that old brick, as long as the brick's structurally sound, which we believe it is. It's the mortar in, in between the bricks that's crumbling, but the bricks themselves seem to be sound. And, you know, we have given them a directive to, uh, to try to incorporate that into the building.
Ms. Scales.
Um, the o- only question I had is who can I direct? The four-one-two members to, to speak with, to confirm in terms of whether or not they have parking? Cause I want to make sure, you know, I'm being respective of the, you know, the conflict of interest, uh, rules here. Um, everybody is very much aware that Leland works for four-one-two food rescue. Um, I by no means had anything to do with the contract or the, the current situation with four-one-two food rescue and the borough. Um, but they're trying to, to follow the meetings and what's happening now is it's more so like, hey, uh, what's going on? Like, I think I really shouldn't be the contact person for, for this sort of information or the, the individual that's following up on this information because it, my husband works for, for the company. So who can I direct them to, to speak with? To confirm in terms of where their situation lies in terms of parking?
They can, they can talk to me about it. I was going to reach out to them within the next week or so. I was going to give them, them Eco Tone and Worm Return a, a letter stating that their, their leases were being terminated um, a few weeks ago, but then since we discussed about moving them with us, I held off doing that. So now the letter's going to be, the lease is terminated, however, we have space for you at the new building. So, but I'll, I'll contact them personally to talk to them about it. But, um, they can, if they're watching or if you, um, uh, if you want, if anybody want else talks to them between now and then, there's well over a hundred parking spaces up at the, up at the school. So they can have ten spaces or so for their trucks and for their employees. And what, what I figured we could do is we would just go up there with them. Um, you know, I could meet them up there and say, where do you want to park? And that will be the four-one-two parking area. And then there won't be any conflicts with anybody. Um, because they'll have, there's plenty of room on that site, um, to, for them to park. So I, I will be in touch with them, excuse me, next week or so.
All right. Thank you again also Bill for the summary recap that you gave because it was right on point.
Thank you.
Ms. Salisbury.
Um, so I don't want to derail us too much, but I just didn't think it was helpful to update. I spoke to Laura from Worm Return and, um, about the issue with the utilities and so forth. And I think she will be able to cover the utilities. She said she can afford like a few hundred dollars a month. If it is in excess of that, I'm happy to, you know, help secure grant funding because I think it's worth it. She also said that she, um, had hoped to expand, uh, the number of Swissvale households. Um, she was currently doing twenty-five and she said she would be willing to do up to fifty at this time. Um, if twenty-five more Swissvale households wanted to do worm composting with her service, she would do that for free for us. So just wanted to let you know, but nothing's like hammered out or anything. Just wanted to give you an FYI.
Very thanks for that update. All right, let's move on. Uh, next is.
Chris, go ahead. Sorry. Two things real quick. One in, in, uh, and maybe we talked about this last Wednesday and I'm not remem- remembering in regards to the worm return. I- is there going to be a place for them at the new, new building?
We'll find a place for them.
Okay.
Um, is, I, I had a conversation with the, with the facilities director and also, and, um, Ms. Salisbury and I had a conversation with, um, the superintendent and they said, you know, the, the, the lease area is roughly five thousand square feet. But they said nobody else is in the building. So as long, if, if we find them a place to put them in the building, they, they have no problem with that.
Okay. And then, um, my second question, and I don't know if we've heard anything updated from the architects with us securing the space in the school and the process being able to now start moving forward for people moving out. Is there any updated timeline on, on when demolition would begin?
No, since we sent them back to, since we sent the architect back to the table, you know, to try to do some value engineering to bring, you know, to make sure that this is an affordable building and doesn't overtax the residents. They, they have come back to us with, to Sarah and Ellis and myself, we've been working with them with a somewhat smaller plan, which we need to share with the building committee. It actually works very well because the, um, the, the flow, it works better than, uh, previously. So they did a little more thinking on this and we did little, eliminate like one office upstairs and, you know, make some smaller areas, areas a little smaller. Uh, like we reconfigured the stairs just to make them a straight flight instead of having a turn. So it saves square footage. Um, but, um, we, I was going to, it mentioned my report, the building committee is not going to meet this month because there's nothing really to report on because they're still working on that. They'll be working on another cost estimate. So the demolition would probably be no sooner than April, May, uh, at this point. So the demolition would probably be no sooner than April, May uh at this point. But you know, the the reason for for needing to move out of that building is, you know, almost three years ago, we were told and you should move out of here in two. So you know, we want to, we want to be, take care of our employees, make sure that we're out of there. Um, and then we'll get all the utilities shut off. Now, one thing I did see, um, Ms. Salisbury had posted today that there's a, the special election is going to be held on February seventh. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what they announced today. Yes.
Okay. So you know, the 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 county usually uses the building as a as a voting precinct. So um, we could, you know, I I don't see the need for them to find a new spot now. Um, for February seventh, we can leave leave the utilities on then because we'll probably still be coming back and forth to get something. But once that election is over, I think then we need to terminate all the utilities and and then the uh, if we go out and we can have the asbestos abated after that.
Bill.
Yeah, Greg, I was just curious, uh, you might not have had a chance yet, but um, I I didn't know if it looks like it. Uh, it's going to be possible that we could um have a space for council meetings up there.
There's a large classroom up there. I mean, it's it's smaller than our council chambers was, but yeah, it's it's a possibility. It's not a, it's not out of the realm of possibility.
But it it would be heated. It's like the the part of that we're going to be heating.
Yeah, it's part of the lease area that we're going to, that we are going to lease. So yeah, it would be heated and and cold.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, um, ready to move on? Next is uh President's Report. I don't really have anything. I just am delighted and I'm sure the rest of council is delighted to announce that we have not met in executive session. Uh, finally, so uh we'll keep moving through Mayor's Reports. Mayor Schwartzweller.
I don't have much of a report and you may never hear me say that again. So enjoy this, guys. Um. I just want to thank everyone who attended and helped get together our tree lighting festivities last Saturday. Uh, Jordan and DPW, you did a great job finding us a beautiful tree and setting it up. And um, the fire department and Dave Nickel helping with uh setting up the department and helping with cleanup. I appreciate you very much and all the volunteers and Mr. Mrs. Claus. And the um librarian, Miss Cece, who came and gave out lovely books. And um, it was a great evening and I thank everyone who attended. And I just want to say, I wish everyone a very happy holiday, whatever you celebrate. May your new year be healthy and prosperous and that's my report.
Ms. Alfonso Wells.
Yes, I want to just thank the borough for being um uh for being inclusive uh on on this particular celebration. Um, we did have um uh menorah up and and we did have a um a banner. Uh, representing Kwanzaa also at the festivities. And um, next year, hopefully we can uh coordinate and then we can get um uh speakers to actually say what they mean. So that when they're standing there, they'll understand what the lights mean um for each one. And 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 people will get a little bit of an understanding for that, but I enjoyed uh seeing all of the people who were there. Um, and it was really nice and everybody was very friendly and it was hot chocolate and cookies and sparklers. Of which I was able to get one and I was so happy with that, who knows? Uh, but nothing like sparklers in the dark uh to make one happy. So it was very, it was very nice and and people really um liked seeing that. So um, next year we can even make it even better, but we did appreciate all of the inclusion that we saw.
All right, let's move on to the Borough Manager's Report, Mr. Batch. Now, Mr. Batch, I just want to um clarify something because I think there may have been a miscommunication. Uh, Mr. Mizer, when he was asking about the building and worms, he specifically was asking about finding space for them in the new building. Uh, and you talked about using five thousand square feet that you'll find space for them. Uh, and I think you were referring to the temporary building at the school. And so I just want to make sure, uh, maybe if Mr. Mizer can ask this question again and uh i- if, just to make sure you understand it. And if that is the answer, then then that's fine, but I want to make sure that there wasn't a misconception on the public meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. No, uh, yeah, I was, I was specifically curious if if there was going to be space made in in the newly constructed. Building for worm return at that point, or if if that had been discussed or if if. If we would be terminating that agreement when the new building is built.
I'm sorry, I miss, I misunderstood. I thought we were talking about the new location we're moving to. Um, no, there's no, there's, there won't be any room for warm return or any really or any of of the other uh facilities that we have at the at the borough building now. Um, you know, when we do move to the new borough building, they will have to find new locations. So, and I will, I will let them know that too at the at the time, you know, when I, when I have a conversation with them. So they have about another year and a half, you know, do, you know, year and three quarter maybe to, you know, to um, to uh, to be with us. But they're going to have to spread their wings and, you know, and spread out and find somewhere else.
Mr. Batch, before you continue with your report, I know Ms. Salisbury has her hand up. Um, I assume it's on what was just clarified, so I want to give her an opportunity to to speak. So go ahead, Ms. Salisbury.
I had the same misunderstanding and I thought you meant at the up at the school. So um, I, yeah, they're they're clear on the fact that they have, like Mr. Ratchy said, maybe eighteen months or so. And they have to find a new home for themselves. I'm working on finding them a permanent home. Um, so yeah, so also Eco Tone will be paying for their own transportation up the hill and everything. We're not covering that from the borough budget.
Yeah, I I thought, I thought that had been discussed, but you know, I, when you mentioned that they were doubling from twenty five to fifty, which is exciting. Because as I think I I have some people on my street who may be interested in it, but I just didn't know if then doubling, then they were aware. That they may not have space in the new building, but it's good to hear.
I think, yeah, I think it's one of those things of like, while we're here, let's do it and then, you know, they'll find a permanent home after a while.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that there was, because you, you know, he said new and it'll, it'll be new to us, but it's not the brand new building. Uh, and and I just want to make sure that there was uh clarity between those those comments. So uh, Mr. Batch, why don't you go ahead and continue with your report?
Sure, um, we covered a few things already. Uh, the boards and commissions have been advertised and as I said last week, we do have seats available on the planning commission zoning hearing board. Water Authority Board, uh Recreation Advisory Committee, Shade Tree Committee, Civil Service Commission, Steel Valley Authority. So anyone who's interested in serving on any of those boards can please um send us a um, a resume and a cover letter by January thirteenth. And then we will bring that to council at our um for interviews at the end of January and then we could point February first. Um, the um, the the incumbents have been notified that their seats are expiring. And if they wish to reapply, that they they do so, they would have to go through the interview process, just like anybody, any new person who is uh, who who's interested in in serving. So then council can make their selections of who they want to appoint. Um, the uh, the signs we talked about last week and there's some stuff on Facebook, it it Monogahela and Shore, the traffic uh signs were changed. To eliminate the uh no rate turn, the uh, the the rate turn, you know, the except rate, stop except rate turn. And there's been, you know, there's been a lot of cars still going through there. The police have been doing some enforcement there. They're not giving tickets, but they are um pulling people over and warning them. If especially if they're flying up there and making the turn um without even slowing, you know, barely slowing down. And they're going to continue to do that when they have time, just to, you know, to to educate people. There're not going to be any tickets issued for, you know, for quite a while. Uh, we just want them to learn, but um, we're we're trying to find one of those flashing red lights that's that's built for the stop signs. Um, to slide over it and hopefully, hopefully we can get first one. I can't believe how hard it's been to try to find one. So as soon as we can get one, we'll put one on there to flash so that you, you know, you see that there's something, you know, else going on there. And also we're up with a little blurb in the newsletter that's coming out in a few weeks, uh, be right on the front page. So you know, hopefully that will help the situation there and also we'll be getting the signs up on Milligan and Rosland here shortly. We'll do the same thing there um with the, you know, with the um, uh, and for, or with the warning, you know, to try to, try to give an advance warning. And the last thing I have is uh, we won't be meeting on the twenty eighth. We had that meeting in the advertisement last year as the, you know, as needed, if needed, which we really don't need the meeting. Um, because we we got all the end of the year business done, which was adopting the budget to tan loan and everything else we need to do. Um, we will, our next meeting will be January fourth, twenty twenty three. And right now, the only thing I have for the agenda is the adoption of the anti-discrimination ordinance and the establishment of the Human Resources Commission. Uh, that is the only thing, agenda item so far, uh, that will be advertised December twenty second. And it'll be ready for adoption on the uh, on January fourth. So that is all I have.
Ms. Salisbury.
Are we advertising in the valley mirror still? What are we using for advertising?
Valley mirror.
Okay.
All right, uh, thanks for that report. Uh, let's move on to the Borough Engineers Report, Mr. Ziskow. Oh, hold on, this, this, hold on one second, Mr. Mr. Ziskow, hold on one second. I'm sorry, Ms. Skills wants to say something.
My apologies. At, this is more so a a question for Greg and it's just for clarity. The for the minutes and everything as it relates to the in. High discrimination ordinance. Um, I understand that it's going to be published and it's going to be published. Towards the end of the month so that council can vote on it um at the start of the new year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear for that.
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Ziskow, go ahead.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. President. After all that, I really have nothing to report. I just want to offer everybody a very happy holiday season and a healthy and prosperous new year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ziskow. You as well. Okay, let's move to the Water Authority Report, Ms. Crombie Collins.
Hello. Um, this is an overview of the board meeting from November twenty second. Um, as we all know, the cost of everything is going up. It's been a point of discussion here on many items. And that includes the supplies that impact getting water to you. So getting the anticipated news out of the way first, the twenty twenty three budget. Includes a five percent rate increase for residential, commercial, industrial. And public sales and a three percent rate increase for bulk sales. An example of the residential impact is included in my report. The average customer bill increase will um, will be forty two dollars and nineteen cents. Um, that's an average increase of two dollars. That is a um, daily rate of point oh six seven. On a thirty day bill um to. Show the, what those numbers mean to an average user. As part of the workshop meeting, the annual audit presentation from Zeleno- Zelenkovsky Axel Rod was made with no audit findings. That's the best report that the authority can get, so we were very happy with that. Authorization has been given to amend the Articles of Incorporation to increase the life of the authority for fifty years. After having received all of the necessary um agreements from the participating boroughs. Authorization was given to enter into agreements for the new computer system, more to come in the future on that. Approval was given for changes um and continued management of the retirement plans with the Mark, with Marquette Associates. The Penn Vest Lead Line Replacement Program progress continues. Uh, there hasn't been any um updates in Swissville, but uh. I anticipate that that will slow down for through the winter months, but um we'll be back on that. Um, as soon as the weather breaks and Swissville um will have continued updates made. The Kerry Furnace Phase Three Project Materials are now expected in May twenty twenty three. RIDC has requested changes to the developers agreement and they are under review with the authority solicitor. Other business was conducted, the agenda, engineers report, the report of management and the previous me- meeting minutes. Are available online. There were twenty four mainline brake system wide since the last board meeting. And there were a hundred and seventy eight distribution, service and repairs, eight of which occurred in Swissville. There's a chart included in my report. Uh, again, if you have or see any water issues, please contact WPJWA Customer Service. At four one two two four three sixty two hundred. The next board meeting is January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. So I will not have a um, an update at the January fourth meeting. Um. And I also want to say happy holidays to everybody. Oh, and I will be reapplying or applying for reappointment. For the next term to the Water Authority and you'll receive my paperwork in the next uh, within the deadline. And that's my report. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Ms. Crombie Collins. I want to circle back with some of the other council members, uh, and and maybe even you, Ms. Crombie Collins, to this. Uh, line item from Wilkins Pen Joint that the average customer bill is forty two dollars and roughly twenty cents. Is anybody's bill forty two dollars and twenty cents? I feel like that's not the average bill.
Yours is under that?
Tracy, there's only two of us in our house.
I have teenagers and I swear to God, my, 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 my bill is at least a hundred and fifty dollars a month. And that's what I used to pay every three months and now it's every month. It's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. My children need to get a job because I'm not paying this money for them to take long showers.
That is, that is, uh, I understand that and uh. To add injury to that, Alka-San will also have a seven percent increase. They have published their budgets five years in advance with seven percent increases every year in four or five years.
Ms. Salisbury, go ahead.
So I remember from some years ago when Tim Ward was on council, he expressed concern over this. And we were told that the majority of your bill is in fact related to flushing your toilet and not taking showers. So while I will not advocate the measures that Councilman Ward advocated back then. I will just give you an FYI on where your bill comes from. So see if your toilet's running.
It it is about, um, if if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a thirty seventy percent split between water and sewage. With the Alka-San bill being the the larger portion. Um, there are some tips on the website and uh, as Mr. Ward had mentioned, if it's yellow, let it mellow. But then he he ran into problems because he had low flow toilets and you cannot do that with a low flow toilet. So you know, make sure you're not leaking, that that you don't hear a drip anywhere. You know, you want to make sure that you're not seeing water where you wouldn't expect to see water, all those kind of things. You want to make sure um that you're, you know, don't run the water when you're brushing your teeth, all kinds of those. Um, conservation to bring that water usage down.
I I think it's really good to know that if you do have a low flow toilet, which I don't think, I think I gerry rigged the low flow toilet. So I don't really have one, but if you actually have a real low flow toilet, you cannot let uh.
Well, thank you for your report.
Happy holidays!
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't an attack on you by any means. It's just frustrating when I have to pay more for water than I do even electricity. Or gas or any of these other utilities. So. Let's move on. Uh, Solicitors Report, Mr. McTiernan.
Uh, I do not have anything in addition to my agenda items this evening. I would thank council and uh for their cooperation in moving the due process. Uh, hearing along for the pension issues. So we'll move forward with getting that hearing scheduled. Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. Um, are there any kind of last minute announcements that anyone wants to make? Uh, Ms. Schwartzweller, I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, I forgot to mention Saturday, December, or Sunday, December eighteenth. Is the third annual Blue Santa Toy Giveaway. That will be at uh, at seventy six hundred Evans Street. Old West Junior High or New Administration slash Police Station. Um, so that will happen from eleven to two on December eighteenth. So if you are or know anyone who is in need of toys or would like to come up and help out. We welcome everyone and that is, that is through the police department and several others uh in the area.
Hey, Dini, I'd like to help. Is there any kind of way you guys can send me like a calendar invite or something just so I don't forget? Um, but I would like to participate in, in helping out distribute.
Yeah, just show up and, and help us out. But yeah, I'll, I'll try to remind you.
Thank you.
Great. And Ms. Ms. Schwartzweller, thanks for reminding us of that.
And thanks to all the departments who, um, work all year through to pull this off. It's, it's really a great, um, event and a well-needed event in our area.
Any other announcements? All right, I'd love to entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:14 PM.
Motion to adjourn at 8:14 PM earlier than we do.
And we already have our second, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Good seeing y'all. See you in the new year.
Happy holidays!
Happy holidays!